This is the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting for June the 19th, 2018. This meeting is now called to order. Commissioners Rice and Vincent will lead us in the invocation and the pledge of allegiance.
Pray with me. Our heavenly Father, we thank you for this day, the day you have made. Lord bless the city of Longview, bless our meeting, bless our country. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Our lead, our pledge of allegiance to the God of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as well.
Thank you, gentlemen. The chair will now entertain a motion for approval of the minutes from the May 15 meeting. Do we have to approve? We have on the motion. Do us have a second and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. The motion carries. First item is the consent agenda. The items on the consent agenda are Platts that meet the requirements of the City of Longview subdivision ordinances. These items will be approved with one vote unless any member of the Planning and Zoning Commission, any member of the public, or the applicant would like an item removed from consent and placed on the regular agenda for discussion. We have two consent agenda items tonight, A and B. Does anyone ask that these be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular Hearing none, we will entertain a motion. The chair will entertain a motion to approve as presented.
Make a motion to approve as presented?
A second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. The consent agenda is approved. Moving to the regular agenda, the purpose of this meeting is to hear all pertinent testimony of those in support of and in opposition to the applications before the board. Tonight is the first of two public hearings required to approve a change in zoning. The board also considers Platts. The procedure for public hearing items to be followed tonight will be, the public hearing will be opened and testimony will be heard in the following order. First, the applicant, second, staff, and third, the general public. That includes those in support and in opposition to a request. If you are part of a large group with a common interest, we ask that you appoint a spokesperson rather than have each individual restate the same information. When addressing the board, please begin by stating your name and address and try to limit your comments to five minutes. When all sides have spoken, the public hearing on the matter will be closed and no further public discussion will be entertained. After each public hearing is closed, the board will vote on the request. Zoning requests and the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendations will go forward to the second public hearing, which will be conducted by the City Council on July 12, Regular agenda item A. Angela?
Thank you. A public hearing will be held to consider application PD-18-06 filed by Jason Jones requesting to rezone from PD-11 and heavy commercial to planned development for an office for approximately 0.1464 acres of abstract 71 D. Ferguson survey tract 16, section 6, located at the northwest corner of Courthouse Drive and West Loop 281.
Thank you, Angela. Is the applicant present? Please come to the microphone and give us your name and address, please.
I'm Jason Jones, 1800 Centenary Drive here in Longview.
Thank you, sir. Tell us about your project.
What we're, our intentions on buying this, actually we're, you know, it's kind of a two-pronged deal. We're wanting to separate it from the restaurant. I bought the lot with, I had to buy the restaurant with it. And it's, for, to probably describe it easily, it'd be Milano's Restaurant there at the end of Courthouse, on the corner of Courthouse and the Loop. So to get the lot, I had to buy the restaurant, which is another deal, but I'm having to separate that lot. And the way it stands now, from the northwest corner of the lot to the southeast corner of the lot, the northern portion is zoned one way, and you've probably got it there, and the southern portion is zoned a different way, just the, kind of the funky way it was done way back when. And I'm just wanting to go in and do a office, build a office. I've got an office on the Loop that's about 100 yards to the west of that, and so I'm just wanting to build that similar to the one that I have on McCann. So, that's pretty overall high up view.
Thank you. Does anyone have questions of the applicant? Any commissioners? I failed to say that Commissioner Cooley had to recuse himself for this particular agenda item, so he will return after this one is finished.
Mr. Jones, what is your intention with that horrendous parking lot situation over there?
When you refer to the lot, which portion is it?
The Milano's?
The restaurant part, or, well...
Beat up, holes in it?
Actually, I just spent a considerable amount of money fixing those holes, but we kind of have a gentleman's agreement. She's got X number of months to buy it back, or I'm just going to restructure a lease and put some money into the building. I like the building, and obviously I have a selfish reason to, you know, make it look nice because I'm going to be the next-door neighbor.
Right.
Once I sell that to her or anyone else, I lose that autonomy. So, I'll get done what I need to get done before that changes hands. If she can't buy it, then I'll, I'll just, I'll fix it up and lease it to whomever.
Because I noticed there's two outbuildings behind the restaurant, and I was overlooking at it that are...
There's a considerable amount of things that I think need to be done to that area.
And I know that's not within your perusal, but if you're the landlord for the whole corner...
Oh, I can appreciate the question, believe me. Yeah.
Because your McCann Road...
Excuse me, go ahead.
Your McCann Road location is gorgeous. I mean, that's...
Well, thank you. Thank you. I appreciate that. It'll be the same style. Matter of fact, it'll be almost exact same plans with the exception of the part that is perpendicular to McCann. That part was an afterthought because our property's on Judson, and we ended up leasing those out and moving all my staff over to McCann. And to make a long story short, the part that's parallel to McCann, that'll be the building on the Loop. So it'll look nice, and I have a vested interest in the money spent so far just to make that look really good. And a lot of that stuff's been there since, you know, I was in grade school when the Loop burst, you know, when it blew up.
Well, I mean, even Sherwin-Williams was updated in the last year.
Yeah, yeah.
I know that the setback is 25 feet in the front. Do you know what the setback is on that restaurant?
On the, on the, on the west side, I believe it's 10 feet. And, is that right, Angela? I think it's 10 feet on the left, on the, on the left as you're looking at the lot on the west side.
From the Loop? From the front side?
From the front, you know...
Which would be the south side, I guess.
Uh, I can't remember off the top of my head. However, it's all been...
So it's the west side, 10 feet on the east side.
Yeah, when we, when we, when it all got drawn up, we looked at a couple of different scenarios with regard to parking. And one thing that I was wanting to do that's really in line with what Angela and these guys were wanting to do as well, we ran into this on McCann where, you know, we were within 100 feet. That, that building's within 100 feet of Fairmont. So you've got a busy intersection, and you've got the two driveways right there that are, I can't remember the name, but it's Scott's mom next door to me. Anyway, the little, the little thrift store and salon. Well, they didn't want to have bam bam bam, three driveways right in a row, which made sense because it's just weird to control that. And we were, we were wanting to do, and we proposed it to them, Scott Hamilton's mom, that's who it is, to do a shared driveway. Well, she didn't want to do that, so we had to do a driveway. What I'm wanting to do is do a shared entrance egress driveway in where the current one is, use that one. In other words, we're not even going to be adding a driveway on the Loop. It'll just, it'll just go, and you'll just turn to the right and go into our parking. And we've got plenty of room for parking and all the other things that go along with it.
And to answer your question, I think the existing building, the restaurant, I think it's about at 25 feet. The proposed building's actually a little further, just 25 is a minimum. His drive aisle's 24 feet wide, and then he's got parking that's 18, so he's actually set back more than 25 feet.
And it's a relatively small building. It's less than 1,400 square feet, so it's...
Single-story?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes. Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Staff?
Thank you. As stated previously, the applicant is rezoning from PD-11 and heavy commercial to planned development for an office. The proposed building will be approximately 1,250 square feet, and will have a minimum of five parking spaces, minimum setbacks, 25 feet in the front, 10 on the rear, zero on the west side, and 10 feet on the east side. The applicant will have shared access with the adjacent property, and they have one driveway onto Loop 281, and currently they have one onto Courthouse Drive. Staff does recommend approval of this request. I would be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Thank you. Any questions of staff? Hearing none, we'll go to the public hearing of, is there anyone that would like to speak in support of this project? Hearing none, is there anyone that would speak in opposition of this project? Hearing none, the public hearing is closed. The chair will entertain a motion.
Make a motion that we approve as presented?
I'll second.
Motion and a second. Any questions, comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All in, any opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Thank you. Regular agenda, agenda item B.
Thank you. A public hearing will be held to consider application Z-18-04 filed by Future Frontiers LLC to rezone approximately 30.927 acres of abstract 93 David Hill survey tracts 64 and 75, section 3, and abstract 258 PP Ring survey from agricultural to heavy commercial zoning district located at the northeast corner of East Loop 281 and Eastman Road.
How are you, Mr. Johnson?
Fine, how are you?
Great, thanks. Give us your name and address.
Wade Johnson, 1201 Northwest Loop 281. I'm the owner of Johnson &amp; Pace, the engineer, and Future Frontiers, the developer.
Right. Tell us about your project.
Be glad. Well, you've probably all seen the construction going on. Can you, can you see, what can you see? It's that. The, part of the property's already inside the city limits, zoned C2, and so we're just asking to rezone or zone the rest of the property that we are in the process of annexing to C2 as well. Annexation, first annexation was last...
Last Thursday.
Thursday, and then we have one tomorrow afternoon as well, the second of those two. So, that is, it's commercial, you've seen, all have seen the construction, the road's going in right through the middle of the property. There will be a light across from the drive into Tower Honda. We're going to have a traffic light right there. City and tech stop both wanted it, and then we just have land for sale. Be glad to ask and answer any questions.
Maybe you and staff both. I know it's tomorrow night, so why are we doing this before it's official? I mean, and it was trivial, but just for the record...
You can run zoning and annexation concurrently where, when it goes before council on July the 12th, so the two public hearings have to be held per local government code, but on July 12th, both of them will be presented at council. Annexation will happen first, and then zoning will happen after.
So the city will take action on our recommendation after?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Just to get my head straight.
So we can actually...
Contingent on...
You can make a recommendation. So Planning and Zoning Commission makes a recommendation to City Council for zoning requests. Yes, sir.
So at this time, the property is still in the ETJ?
Yes, sir, that is correct.
But also part of it's in the city limits right now?
That is correct, yes, sir. The frontage along Eastman and Loop 281 is inside the city limit, limits, and is currently zoned heavy commercial.
Basically, it allows, once the property's annexed, permanent zoning to be designated for what the actual use is going to be as opposed to just being zoned agricultural.
Agricultural.
So it kind of lets the process move a little, little more seamless instead of them having to come back later down the road and go through the zoning process.
So that, don't make that entire tract go to C2?
Yes. All that's in the hatched area. Yes, sir.
Which portion is already C2?
This frontage right here where my arrow is?
Okay.
That's their frontage, and it's all zoned C2. And then you can see all of this, it's about the first 300 feet into their property is zoned C2. And then you see all this red here, and the adjacent properties are also C2.
Is the traffic light where the dark dirt is?
The traffic lights, right?
Next to Marbury?
Yes, exactly.
Yeah.
This is, I will say, I really like the trees that are in C2. I would encourage you to save as many of the mature trees as you can in the whole project, but it really creates a nice buffer.
We're leaving, you see what's out in the property. We did that on purpose, left as many as we could. And of course, the landscape ordinances will dictate that we have probably quite a few more before it's all said and done.
And you've got the ponds in there too, right?
Pardon?
The ponds are in the...
Yeah, we have, okay, we, you can see from the Loop, we rebuilt the dam on Marbury East on Williams Lake, then we built a detention pond in that little notch, go up, up right there. We built a detention pond for Marbury right there, and then down at the, at the Loop or right on the big ramp, we're digging a pond right now. That's going to be a retention pond, it's going to have fountains in it. And it'll be, won't just be a big dry bottom hole like you...
It'll only dry, it'll be...
It'll have water in it and fountains.
All right. Any other questions of the applicant? Thank you, sir. Staff?
Thank you. As stated previously, the applicant is requesting to rezone to heavy commercial for approximately 30.927 acres. The applicant has requested that this property be annexed by the City of Longview as he stated. Previously, we've had one public hearing, we'll have another public hearing tomorrow at 11:55. When annexation occurs, property that is annexed is automatically assigned an agricultural zoning designation. So when development occurs, land that's zoned agricultural will need to be rezoned to accommodate for the growth. Staff does recommend approval of this request. I would be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Questions of staff? Hearing none, the public hearing is open, and anyone here that would like to speak in support of the project is invited to the microphone. Hearing, seeing none, is there anyone that would like to speak in opposition? Please come to the microphone. Seeing none, the public hearing is closed.
Move for approval.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Thank you. Item, agenda item C.
Thank you. A public hearing will be held to consider application Z-18-05 filed by Lori Horn Wilcox to rezone Lot 3, Block 2, Huffman Heights addition from single-family 2 to office zoning district located on the south side of Montclair Street, west of Judson Road.
Is the applicant here?
Yes.
Please come forward. Thank you. Give us your name and address.
I'm Lori Horn Wilcox. My address is 1915 Judson Road, Longview.
Thank you. Tell us about your project, please.
Okay, so I'm going to purchase this property, and a section of it was used for, like, an entrance and exit off of Montclair to the offices, and it's zoned as residential. And so because we're using it as an entrance way onto the office property, I wanted to go ahead and rezone it for commercial, and then if we ever needed it for additional parking, it would be available, but that would be, my future plans would be parking.
All right. Thank you. Are there any questions of the applicant? Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Staff?
Thank you. The applicant is rezoning, requesting a rezone from single-family 2 to office zoning district. As the applicant had stated previously, this property has been used as vehicular access for the office complex that's actually located on Judson Road. It's been like that for several years. The property that is adjacent to it to the east is actually zoned general retail, and then the property to the south is zoned office. Staff does recommend approval of this request. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Any questions of staff?
So it's going from single-family 2 to O?
Yes, sir.
Is there anything in the O that requires that access, that egress access, to still stay intact? The number of square footages in the three office buildings, you're going to crimp the fire if she decided she wasn't going to leave that access. You're going to landlot the three office buildings?
The three office buildings have access onto Judson Road. They have been, let me try to get to the aerials real quick. They do have two, two existing driveways on Judson Road. I don't know when they put the driveway in onto Montclair, but it was, it was put in, I think it's asphalt. Yeah. But the driveway was put in, I'm not sure when. I know as a child, when I was younger, it was there. And so because you're using it for that office park, it does really need to be zoned office. Did that answer your question?
It's common ownership, too.
It's asphalt, asphalt, but not hard. Just random.
Yeah, I see, it's asphalt. Part of it's asphalt.
Not bad.
It's asphalt.
Any other questions of staff? The public hearing is now open. Would anyone that would like to speak in support of this agenda item, please come to the microphone? Seeing none, anyone that is in opposed, or is opposed, please come to the microphone. Give us your name and address, sir.
My name is Tim Tunneman. I live at 106 Montclair.
Yes, sir.
The property we're discussing butts up to my front yard. It's, my front yard's right over there. If you could bring up another picture.
Let me see if I can bring up an aerial for you. Are you right here?
Yes.
Okay.
My property lines is that telephone pole right there.
Mm-hmm. He's to the right.
And if you'll bring up the, just the overhead...
Let's bring up the aerial real quick.
Yeah, the aerial.
There we go.
Yeah, this is...
You are right here?
My house. Yes, that's my house right there. Like I say, we have a fence all the way up to the front corner of the house that the businesses had put there prior when they had built it as a buffer, but there's, you know, I'd say there's no fence up there, and I just don't want a business sitting in my front yard. I mean, because there is, like you see, from that driveway to my house, is very little land there. And like I say, I just, I just want to protect my income, my value of my property. I don't want, like I say, I don't want a business sitting in my front yard. I can say, the rest of it, as far as the rezoning is concerned, I read all that too, and that, that doesn't bother me at all. I mean, there's businesses there. I don't have a problem with the businesses being there. But like I say, I'm just concerned for my property value as it is right now.
Anyone have any questions of Mr. Tunneman?
And what acreage is there?
Um, I can't, let me double check.
Won't see it on here.
If it says on the application.
It's not closed, sitting right there.
We're sticking... Either way. I'm not sure of the size of the lot. Does the applicant know the size of the lot?
Around a half acre.
Ms. Wilcox, are you purchasing this for Mr. Rickett?
Yes, I'm in the process of purchasing it, and my future plans for it was just if we ever needed overflow parking, that might be an area where we could put a parking lot, but we may not. We have 37 spaces in the three complexes, so with that amount, we don't foresee using it, but I just, because I'm rezoning another section in a minute, we just thought we would put it all out there at the same time.
Does fencing go all the way up to the street?
No, sir. It just goes, there's a dumpster, and there's a tree. I don't know if you can see it in here, but I think it goes close to the dumpster, but I don't think it, I don't believe it goes all the way to the street. Now, I would not have a problem putting the fence all the way to the, you know, property where I needed to, like 10 feet off the road, frontage or whatever. I don't have a problem extending the fence down to make it more private for him. That's, and I like how tall the fence is. It's a really tall one.
Is it a privacy fence now?
Yeah.
Yeah. There's an eight-foot privacy fence behind all the businesses, all the way up to the...
Yeah, there's the dumpster.
Kind of see it right here.
Yeah, there's the dumpster.
All the way up to probably six foot off the front corner of my house, and then it comes over to the property line and goes back. So...
And your house faces Montclair, is that correct?
Yes, yes.
Angela, can we put in here that fencing would have to be included in the approval process?
We could, yes. We can make a stipulation that that fence be extended.
But with your house, would the privacy scent be a sufficient help for that situation?
It would, it would increase the situation. I mean, it'd make the situation better. You know, I do like openness, but, I mean, I understand.
Sounds like she's trying to come halfway to help you and everything. That's, that's the good part of it, but at least it's parking and not a high-rise.
Right, right. Yeah, exactly.
Ms. Wilcox, what are you planning to do to that driveway?
Right now, I plan on doing nothing and just leaving it. I mean, if, right now, the dumpster, this, I guess there's a dumpster that's pulling in there and picking up the trash. If they need it to be a little wider to have more access, I can make it wider, but if, because I don't own the business yet, I don't know what's been going on over there, so I really had planned on doing nothing, but because I'm buying commercial property and this one little piece was residential, I just kind of wanted it to all be commercial together and not be that I had part of it one way and part of it another way.
Okay, thank you.
I never saw that one up there, but that's a good...
There is a good visual on...
Page 39.
It was ABC, part of her application process.
And you can see that 104 Montclair.
Okay.
And 106 is his house next door to the right.
What would prevent another office being, being built on that lot?
If it were zoned to office, nothing. I mean, it would just have to meet development, you know, all of our codes and regulations, buffering, minimum buffering, landscaping, setbacks.
I think a lot of folks, when they come into the actual business park, they exit that way automatically. I think it's...
It's easier to get out than to try to get out of Judson.
Except get a little bit rough turn on Montclair.
Well, the parking space is over there where the Methodist Church District offices are, or all at angles anyway.
Any further questions, comments? Any further questions, comments? Thank you all. Any other general public comments? Hearing none. The public hearing is closed. The chair will entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve, and with the stipulation that we add fencing into, within the city requirements.
We have a motion?
Say.
We have a second. We have a second. All in favor, please say aye, or raise your hand, please. Any opposed? The motion carries. Agenda item B.
Thank you. A public hearing will be held to consider application S eighteen oh three, filed by Lori Horn Wilcox, requesting a specific use permit to allow for a barber or beauty shop in office zoning district for abstract two forty-four JW Yates survey tract two and two dash oh one and Lot three, Block two, Huffman Heights Edition located at fifteen eleven Judson Road.
Do you all have, go ahead and come back up. Thank you, if there are any additional-
Say my name again?
Yes, go ahead.
It's Lori Horn Wilcox, one nine one five Judson Road, Longview.
Thank you. Any additional questions? Hearing none at this time. We'll go ahead and move to staff.
Thank you. The applicant is requesting a specific use permit to allow for a barber or beauty shop in office zoning district. A specific use permit is required for this type of use in office zoning district to ensure no negative impacts on surrounding properties. If you can see on this aerial, the property to the north is, it is zoned general retail. However, it is a beauty salon, and there are a couple of properties to the south that also have specific use permits for beauty salons as well. Staff finds that this request is consistent with the future lane use map and surrounding uses. Staff does recommend approval of this request. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Thank you, Angela. Any questions of staff? So this is only for building B?
We, no, it's going to cover the whole property, the SUP, because, you know, even though she is requesting for building B, the parking will be utilized for the salon, the driveway is used for the salon, so that SUP is going to cover all the property.
The whole L that we're looking at? Any other questions of staff? Hearing none. The public hearing is open, and we will ask for anyone that would like to speak in support of, thank you so much, in support of this applicant, of this agenda item. Seeing none, anyone that would like to speak in opposition? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Any further questions, comments?
So we're, we're like, the, the request is to give them a specific use permit on all three buildings?
All properties. So like Frankie said, the L, the whole, the all properties. Yes.
Not potential, future properties.
So then basically, A and C could become whatever?
No, A, A and B could become salons, but then we would have to, staff would have to ensure that there was enough parking. And so, um-
I thought B is what we were-
It, it's for the whole property. I know the application does say B, but it's for the whole property because like, like I said previously, the parking is all shared, the driveways are shared, the access is shared. That will all be utilized for salon.
So, correct me if I'm wrong, but A and C at the present time are staying as offices?
That is correct.
But she will own them?
Yes, sir. She owns all, all three properties.
And she's putting a salon in the middle of two office parks?
Yes, sir.
Within that zoning?
Yes.
Any further consideration? You ready to call for-
Ms. Horn? I got a question, Ms. Horn.
Have you spoke with the other folks in, in A and C, or they, has there been any objection from them as far as trying to do what you're doing?
No, um, the building A, um, it's a church.
It's the Methodist Church corporate office.
Yeah, and they don't u- they don't utilize the parking because they don't have a lot of people that are just coming to visit them. And so they've said they very rarely use it. The back offices, every time I've been down there, there's been plenty of spaces, and so we counted, there was thirty-seven spaces. We thought that was more than enough, but that was kind of why the part on Montclair was brought in tonight, too, because I thought if, in the future, we started running out of parking, then I could make that into a parking lot.
So no objections as far as the other tenants, then?
No, we haven't had any.
Thank you.
Okay.
So these businesses will still meet city parking requirements-
Yes, ma'am.
Based on square footage of the buildings.
That is correct.
Even without that additional lot?
That is correct.
Thank you. Any further questions or comments? I want to give you plenty of time, but, all right. Hearing none. The chair will entertain a motion.
Motion for approval. I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please show a, your hand, right, raise your hands, please. And those opposed? The motion carries. Are there any additional agenda items? Staff?
Um, the plan development over at Berkeley Street was approved by city council last week.
Okay. Any additional citizen comments? If not, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you for coming.